Want to grab? Would you bring? Okay.
Just waiting to make sure you're all ready. So, thank you Commissioners of Channing Hall, Community and Economic Development Director, and I'm happy to introduce to you Amanda Perkins, who's our Climate Policy Specialist at CED, and Ariel Gerstein, Sustainability Coordinator.
Administrator Program.
Have it right there. Facilities and Fleet Management. The two of them have been working collaboratively and cross-departementally on these two grant application opportunities, which we share with you via email. And so appreciate the review of those ahead of time and the support, but going to give these two an opportunity to go through what these grants are designed to do and opportunities to go with them.
Awesome. Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for letting us present these two grant opportunities to you this afternoon for your review and direction before we submit the full applications. The first grant we'll be discussing is the Colorado Energy Office Local Impact Accelerator Grant. And the second is the Denver Regional Council of Governments Building Policy Sub Award. And you should have in front of you two letters of support, one for each proposal. So diving into the first one.
And these are the ones we received by email as well, right?
Yes.
Yes. Started understanding the obvious like the third time.
Oh, yes, yes. So the CEO Local Impact Grant, Ariel and I submitted a letter of intent for the Colorado Energy Office in July. And since then, we've been encouraged to submit the full application, which is due November 5th. There's two pieces to this grant. The first is policy work and the second is project implementation. The policy work is to support local resilience, reducing emissions and advancing the state pollution reduction goals. And the project implementation is to support four sectors: buildings, land use, transportation, and waste. So just a little bit about our internal process. We have worked cross-departementally with CED, FFM, and Public Works to develop our policy and project ideas. And we've also collaborated with external partners such as the Regional Air Quality Council, RTD, Maker Housing Partners, and several of our municipalities on our project development. Starting off with our policy proposals, all three proposals are in the land use sector and connected to renewable energy. First of all, we would like to develop standards and regulations for utility scale geothermal operations and wind energy land uses. We would also like to update existing solar energy land use regulations and battery storage standards. And we believe that by advancing these policies, we'll be better positioned to attract renewable energy development, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and support Colorado's statewide climate and energy goals while also promoting economic development. And I'll pass it to Ariel to talk about our projects.
Thanks. So we have four projects. As Amanda mentioned, the different sectors we could apply. All of our projects are in the transportation sector, so alternative transportation. The first one is e-bike hubs at RTD stations or activity centers in Adams County. As you can see, example, one of you happens to be in the photo there in North Glen for the ribbon cutting. So that's the general idea of this project. So we would work with our nearby municipalities and hire a vendor to install solar powered e-transportation of power hubs at strategic locations through the county. And we have also already been in talks with RTD on this project. The second one is e-bike libraries for affordable housing residents, and that is where our maker partnership comes in. So we're looking to partner with affordable housing properties and again, hire a vendor to install up to five e-bike racks for those communities. Next slide. The third project is e-bike vouchers to Adams County residents. We are looking to distribute e-bike vouchers to residents to go towards purchasing a personal e-bike. And we would offer tiered vouchers based on income. We know that there is interest in Adams County based on the state rebate program. We contacted the state and there were many applicants from Adams County as part of that program. And the state's program is now closed, so there would be no overlap there. And the fourth project is a public works project. It's a micro transit pilot project. Essentially, it's aiming to expand short trip transportation options for community members in southwest Adams County by piloting micro transit service. So the project is going to connect dense residential areas to public transit with on-demand shared shuttles. So we're looking to improve our first and last mile connectivity and prioritizing the utilization of low or no emissions vehicles. And I also wanted to mention that there is no match required for this grant on these projects.
There's no what?
Match.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. So just looking at a budget breakdown, the Energy Office asked us in a letter of intent, as well as in the application, to provide three different budgets: constrained, standard, and vision. The vision budget is the cap for the grant, $5 million. So the policy proposal is in all of the budgets because the policy proposal is required for this grant. And then the policy basically unlocks the money to the projects. So depending on what we would be awarded, we would be doing the policy and then, you know, one to many of these different projects.
Just to give a quick timeline, oh, yeah.
So going back to that grant, the previous slide, please.
Sure.
So am I understanding so that e-bike libraries, the e-bike vouchers, and the micro transit pilot are not possible on a constrained budget? Is that what that's?
That's correct.
Indicates. And also the micro and micro transit also at standard. So now you said the maximum is $5 million?
Yes.
So, okay. So if they, if we were awarded $5 million, do they designate, when they're in their grant offer, do they outline or designate where those funds are to be spent, or is that up to us?
I would believe they would award it as to how we outlined it in our budget proposal in the application. So it would be awarded as, you know, the amount we ask for in these projects.
So I guess my question is if they say they went with our utility scale renewable energy policy and they gave us $5 million for that, then that's the only one of these projects that would continue with this grant? Is that correct? Or that's the only?
Yes, but I don't think they wouldn't award us that amount of money just for the policy, just because we wouldn't need that amount of money just to develop the policy.
Okay, well, then something like, or the e-hubs that has a.
Yeah, so we could, I mean theoretically, we could expand the project to whatever amount of money they awarded. We did have like an interview with them in between the letter of intent and the application. And they didn't really indicate, you know, if they were like leaning toward one project or the other. We got good feedback on all of the projects, so we wanted to move forward with all of them. Yeah, sure. So just for a quick timeline, so our application is due in a couple of weeks. And assuming that we can move forward after this session, we'll be applying for that November 5th date. They plan to announce the awards mid-December and then the contracting, signing of the grant documents, all of that would happen in the spring, early spring of 2026. And we would officially begin our policy and program, we're kind of March-April timeline. And the grant ends October 2029, is when the final report is due. I'm going to turn it back over to Amanda to talk about our next grant.
Great. So the second grant is the Dr. Cog Building Policy Sub Award. This is part of the EPA's Climate Pollution Reduction Grant, which was awarded to Dr. Cog this summer of last year in the amount of nearly $200 million. Of that $200 million, about 35 is going straight to the member governments to support above state minimum building energy code. And the funds will be distributed through a formula, which is based on population, jobs, and growth projections. And through that formula, $1.5 million is available to Adams County for eligible activities. And just like the CEO grant, there is no matching funds that are required. Those eligible uses are staff capacity, training and certification, permitting and system support, technical assistance, community engagement, and more of like a create your own custom measure. A little bit about our internal process for this grant development. For the past six months, we've been holding cross-departmental group meetings and meeting one-on-one with building and planning staff to identify needs and brainstorm project ideas. And based on these conversations, we concluded that the most effective use of these funds is to strengthen our current systems, ensuring that we are prepared to transition smoothly to the International Energy Conservation Code 2018 to the 2024, which we're currently in the process of. And this will hopefully position us better to adopt codes which are above state minimum in the near future. This chart is a very high-level overview of how we are thinking of allocating these funds, and they're ranked from most impactful to least. And it should be noted that over the grant lifecycle, these amounts can be amended. And so these are our best estimates of where the funds would go. So I'm just going to stay really high level, but if you have any questions along the way, definitely feel free to stop me. The first is planning. So this would be working with a consultant to add building decarbonization strategies to our county plans. Second is policy development. This would also involve working with a consultant to help staff in implementation of new policies. Third is staff capacity. We would like to hire a project designated part-time employee to act as an energy efficiency and sustainable business lead. Next is streamlining our permitting processes. And this could go towards a number of different uses like purchasing updated software, permitting reform, and offering more bilingual content. Fifth is internal certifications and training for inspection, permitting, and other staff. This could also include an inspector scholarship program and building policy and energy conferences and workshops for staff. Next, we have inspector support. This could go towards testing and certifications, a library of written resources, and an annual workshop training day. Next, we have communications and outreach, which would be based on outreach to industry and low-income residents for minor home repair and electrical upgrades. And lastly, we have external training, which we were hoping to do a scholarship program for contractors to obtain certifications. And we'd also like to offer a residential and commercial workshop to our residents and businesses on our permitting processes and then make these videos available on our website. And the timeline is very similar to the CEO grant. The application is due at the end of this month. Grants will be awarded mid-December. Contracting will be in January and February of next year. And then in this grant, there will actually be a second competitive round if there are any funds which are not allocated during the first round, which it looks like there will be. And the same end of the grant cycle, which will be in October of 2029. And I will pass it back to Ariel to wrap this up.
Okay, so as Amanda mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, we are looking for letters of support for both of these grants, specifically for the CEO Impact Grant, the policy component, that the idea that, you know, we would support that and that hopefully we can get it passed down the line. And then the Building Policy Sub Award, we're just looking for support for the overall proposal. And the letters of support are a requirement for each grant application. So just to wrap it up, we are looking for direction and approval to move forward with submitting both grant applications. And just also, again, the letters of support. Thank you so much for your time. We're happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? Kathy?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. So in terms of, I love hearing about the potential scholarship opportunities for training for a variety of people, for our staff or for, when you say subcontractors, who are you referring to?
Mostly people who work within Adams County. So it would be contractors who are working on new developments or retrofitting older buildings. And we're thinking about like lead certification or similar programs.
So would those be people who would, because, you know, it's great that we would help make an investment in their certifications and skill building. Would those be folks we'd already be in a contract with or that we would be, or is that maybe, if they won a contract, then we would say, oh, and as part of that, then we will, I mean, so I guess I'm kind of curious how we decide.
Yeah.
How would they be decided that they would win that anymore?
Yeah, that's a great question. We haven't developed all of the details of the scholarship program, but what we were kind of thinking was that each year of the four-year grant cycle, we would offer maybe five scholarships up to $2,000 each to get a certification. And they would all have to be licensed to work in Adams County to be eligible.
And then for the staff scholarships, do we, kind of thinking in terms of protecting our investment, do we, if we offer a scholarship for someone to upskill or give a certification, do we ever put a stipulation that, you know, that's, that it's free to them, it's a scholarship? So it's like, we are just awarding you this. Do we ever put a stipulation saying, and we, you know, that for the next 12 months following, you know, you'd have to remain an employee of Adams County for 12 months from the date of winning your certification? Is there, is there?
Yeah, I mean, we can't require that they stay employed, obviously, but what we could do, we do this with the Sheriff's Academy, that they do sign an agreement that if they don't stay employed, I believe it's two years from the sheriff's office.
That's kind of where I'm going with that.
So we do, they employ you, and we do have a tuition reimbursement program countywide, and that does not have that requirement.
Okay, so that was just because, I mean, things happen. I'm not saying people are, you know, are going to come in with that intent, but just.
It definitely happened.
And then in terms of the attention to streamlining our permitting process, is that specific to decarbonization? Or is that our permitting process across the planning or the development?
Yeah, it would be more broad, as long as the money is going towards bolstering our current systems. They view it as also helping with that specific decarbonization work.
Okay, so the decarbonization sort of is, decarbonization can be a subcategory under the, or can be under the umbrella of looking at the entire process as a whole?
I think it would be hard, it would be hard to isolate, just making an improvement that was only about decarbonization, right? You kind of attacked the whole system.
That's what I thought. I just wasn't sure how specific we had to be in order to be competitive for the grants. Those were my questions on that. Thanks.
And I should say it's non-competitive, so the money is just set aside for us if we want it.
Received such a big award.
Yeah, so we basically present how we would like to use it, and then we would have an iterative process with Dr. Cog. And if there's anything that they want to tweak or adjust, we just kind of like work that out in the contracting phase.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Only they were all like that, right?
I think I support.
I support.
I support as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I know we have the hard copies there.
Oh, yes.
Do you want me to sign in here and pass them over?
Judy, that's where Erica can use the digital.
Sounds great.
Very easy.
Get it, Lynn.
It'll be done when you leave.
And it'll be in ahead of deadline. If you guys can chat.
This is already our.
Well, like, have no conversation.
Sorry.
No, this is October 31st, not November 6th.
All right, Commissioners, we will jump right in. So this is our second week of budget presentations, following up from the proposed budget that we shared last week. Last week, we had a discussion about all of the ongoing budgets requests, those requests that are sort of base building on our operating budget. And this week, we're going to be drilling into the proposed budget recommendations for one-time budget impacts. So that'll be including CIP and including those one-time projects that we have recommended to move forward with for the 2026 budget.
So first, before we dive into all of that, we wanted to bring back a couple of follow-up questions from last week's study session. One of those being around the Head Start ongoing request. So here's kind of the detailed breakdown of that. The request itself is for the $294,000. The breakdown there is $225,000 for additional salaries and benefits. That's based on the Head Start staff being part of the collective bargaining and part of our regular pay plan, but the grant not keeping up with that level of pay increases. And then the $69,000 is for an increase in lease costs. So then you can kind of see, as you go down, the revenues that are planned for Head Start, we have the Head Start grant, and then there's the $1.3 million for the federal pass-through that comes from the state, but that is also part of the Head Start, or it's a federal grant for the Head Start program. And any expenditures broken out by personnel and operating. The difference between those is the level of support that comes from General Fund and Social Services Fund. That is the budget level of support. You know, if expenditures come in less than that, obviously, we don't just transfer it. We transfer up to what they need to keep the fund balance at zero in that fund. So it doesn't accumulate, and then it doesn't spend it down because it doesn't have any fund balance to spend now.
So I have a question about this lease increase. Is that, is it an annual lease?
You know, I think this one actually happened as part of like a restructuring in the lease. There was, I don't have the full details on that. I don't want to give you bad information. I know that, like Nikki Boprey and the facilities team, she's kind of briefed me on that a little bit.
Standing up if you want to wait a moment. He'll be in in just a second.
Coming to answer our question.
There we go. I'd say it would be for the Head Start lease. Not an annual increase amount. My recollection is that it was a restructuring of the lease.
That's correct. Normal escalation on any lease at the expiration of the leases, generally in the neighborhood of 3% to 5%. Sometimes there's more, sometimes there's less, depending on the terms of what we're trying to do. In this case, it's not an annual escalation. It's actually you negotiated natural escalation at that time.
And how long is this lease? How much, what's the length of time this $69,000?
I don't have, I'll text and I'll get it for you momentarily.
Okay.
But it's, I think it's three years, but don't quote me on that. I'll text.
So $69,000 potentially over three years if that's the, you know, that's the increase over that, the time that. But we want a budget for that upfront as opposed to, is that right? I mean, that's what I'm asking.
$69 each year.
It should be per year. That's per year, definitely per year.
$69 each year.
Oh, $69 each year. Okay. That just from property value increase or what is, I mean, that's, that's, I don't, I don't know. It seems like a lot of money, but I don't know. So James shed some light on whether.
We can find out.
Market appropriate, I don't know.
It's typically, oh, the last piece I'll add to that. We do try to negotiate certainly where market is at the time. We work around market somewhere around market. We don't get the terms, we'll get dollars. We don't get a dollar, we'll get favorable terms for the actual tenant in the position of, if there's full service, if there's not full service, who's on the age backboard, things like that. So we can negotiate a lot of things, but generally, the market will tend to escalate towards where the market is at the time with minus some negotiations.
Okay.
So the bottom line there on the right-hand side of your screen is the $671,000. That is the subsidy, if you will, for the Head Start program. That's the gap between what we plan to spend next year and what we plan to receive in federal grant dollars. We have that currently split, as you see, $50,000 from the General Fund and the remaining from the Social Services Fund. In 2024, I do not believe we actually dipped into the Social Services Fund transfer. We used only the General Fund portion, but as federal grant dollars, you know, become more scarce, we have to plan for that, the extra support.
Aside from the Head Start grant we received and the state grant, are there? Aside from the, the Head Start grant we received and the state grant, are there other early, childhood education grants we can pursue? Are there, are there out, are there any out there or is, are these generally, these funds generally that we are just federally based?
So.
Yeah, yeah.
We can tag team.
Generally speaking, the federal monies, um, related to early childhood education are in the Head Start program. We have pursued grants for childcare, um, so to make it a station between childcare and early childhood education. Then we, um, have pursued grants to support childcare and we are currently, um, working on a grant, um, for DOLA, um, to expand childcare access. Um, but early childhood education typically, we don't have, um, programming for specifically from the, the county.
Yeah, so, um, there had been some questions in the last presentation about, um, exceeding our allocation for Head Start. And so our staff kind of put together, there's obviously different ways that, um, counties choose to use those funds. And so in other models where they have not a county-run Head Start program, um, the Head Start providers use this as a portion of their funding, but they have to cobble together a bunch of other different funding. And so just to think about, in those models, they are utilizing C cap, which we all know is on an enrollment freeze. And so that's a bit of a limitation for us. Um, in other models, they will have some market rate kids also together with the kids that are funded by other, you know, subsidies like C cap and Head Start. And so those market rate tuition payments subsidize some of the others. That's not our model here, but that's what others do. And then many of those, um, early childhood providers, say in Denver, for example, that has that model, they, um, also have to do a lot of private fundraising. And so some of those, um, are run by nonprofits that do a tremendous amount of either philanthropic, um, sort of foundation giving or individual giving, and that they cobble together an operating budget. And so here we just have a different model, but I think it's not at all uncommon that the allocation from the feds for Head Start doesn't cover all of your operations, doesn't cover your full lease. It doesn't cover all of the salaries. And so putting together additional funding sources, whether that's general funds or private giving, it's just that as a county operator, we're limited in our ability to ask for philanthropic or private donations to subsidize the early child. We just chose a different model. And so that's all, and that kind of summarizes the information that the, um, Head Start leadership staff put together for us. But if anybody else wants to augment.
I think that's actually, I appreciate you bringing that up. I actually oversaw their Head Start for several years. And then it's a different model, it's a delegate model where they delegate Head Start services through contracts with providers. None of those providers are solely Head Starts. They have other funding support. They have the Denver preschool program support. They have C cap. They have other funding, um, and some, um, occasionally general fund support for some of the costs for Head Start administration. Uh, so it's, it's a different model for the county administration that happens county. Um, it's a little unusual actually in the state, um, for direct county administered Head Start. Um, but that is the, the model that we use.
I think it's just, it's not at all unusual that the Head Start allocation want to cover your full costs. Okay. The cost of childcare is obviously continues to rise and we're experiencing that as a childcare provider. Thank you.
So one of the other follow-ups was, uh, based on this slide here from the Public Health Ongoing Business Case Requests. Um, these were, uh, as we discussed last time, requests that were submitted as business case based on uncertainty around receiving federal funds during budget development, which was, you know, during April or May of this year. Um, and so following that, um, Public Health has provided, uh, you know, the, this information. Uh, just to clear things up, they are not requesting those amounts that you saw on your previous slide to be added to their budget. They've built that in. That was a flag for us to identify risky, uh, programs that may not receive federal funding. And then here you can see where they have and have not received awards and how they have addressed that within their budget. Um, so the, the one point six million dollars they are not asking for ongoing, those will be backed out as ongoing requests. And Public Health has, uh, adjusted their budget accordingly to the revenues they plan to receive. Any questions on that before we jump into the one-time requests?
So you're saying they've adjusted for the, where, where the award was less than, the one that received award was, arrived less than what was in the previous column. They've made the adjustments and so they're not requesting any general fund business case financial support at this time.
That's right. So at the beginning of the budget process, there was still some uncertainty about what, um, these grants would look like, what the awards would look like. And so essentially they had, they have a placeholder in the budget, um, pending more information about the grants. Um, you can see here what they actually have received more clarity now, and they've made operational adjustments rather than asking for general fund, um, support for those programs.
Okay, well, we thank our partners at the Health Department, those adjustments.
All right. Um, so we have three categories of, uh, one-time budget impacts really that are part of this presentation. Um, so we have the one-time operating requests. These are your, like, your non-recurring, uh, support operations or, um, studies, different things like that. Uh, then you also have capital projects. These are, um, you know, the, the major projects that go through the CIP committee. Um, and then we, in Adams County for several years, have split out major maintenance and replacement projects. This is sort of a subset of capital projects, but it's, uh, identified for just what it's called. These are the things we already have that we want to continue to maintain and take care of, um, prior to purchasing something new. Um, and all of these categories are eligible for, uh, use of fund balance because they're one-time and they're not a place increase to the budget. Capital projects and major maintenance go through, uh, the CIP process that we outlined at the beginning of these budget study sessions a couple of weeks ago, where the committee reviews the projects and they discuss them and recommend them. And based on criteria set by the board, you'll see in this presentation, the full listing. But based on the hour, I think probably most of our time we'll spend on the operating increases. And then if you have questions about any of the capital or maintenance, obviously, we're, uh, we'll, we'll take those. Um, but you, I'm sure you noticed there's many, many slides in this presentation. We probably won't have time to just read down every line, so.
But should we hit this one first?
Um.
Parks.
Sure. Yeah, so, um.
One other item from last week that you asked us to come back, and that was the Parks Open Space Projects Fund that had some business cases for ongoing, and you were interested in what was programmatically planned for that operating money in the next year? Why did they need these, that have this ongoing budget? So we, uh, reached out to Byron. He put together a couple of slides. Um, we didn't get him in the packet in time. That was, uh, on us. Sorry about that. So we brought handouts and we brought a friend. Uh, Byron's here to talk a little bit more about them. Uh, but as you can see, um, uh, he's got a lot more detail. Do you want to just run through that, Byron?
Sure. Yeah, I, I think the question first was about the park enhancements and the park small construction projects. So what I have before you, um, I have some more detail than, than what I gave you on the slide. But park enhancements is typically going to be shelters, playground parts, landscaping elements, turf replacement, et cetera, including fishing piers, uh, gates, uh, turf conversion, where we convert swaths of bluegrass to lower water turf. Um, adding vegetation to ground, uh, to bare ground areas. Many areas along the trail system and some of our bigger open space properties are just bare ground or weeds. And so it's converting those to native grasses. Restrooms, uh, retaining walls, uh, maintenance for our art in our parks. And in addition to that, trees, uh, adding trees throughout the system, replacing trees when trees need to be replaced or when they die and where we can have them for shade. So those are, those are typically what the components of the park enhancements would be. Small construction projects are typically going to be, um, something that's a little bit bigger, but we have an in-house parks construction crew that can do a lot of this work. So bridges, um, uh, state with, as I put state requirements for land and water management. We've had to do, uh, replace water gates and water gauges, uh, to make sure we're measuring water properly and compliance with the state. Uh, bridges, making sure that they're, uh, functioning, that they're safe, uh, lighting, uh, electrical work, whether it's part of, um, another bring power to shelters or bring power to a park or bring power to irrigation system or to a restroom, um, foundations for art for shelters, all those types of things, and additional concrete repairs that are not necessarily trail. Although we only have a hundred thousand dollars in the major maintenance replacement plan for trail concrete. And that, huh, that one hundred thousand dollars, um, does not even, does not even get us a fifth of a mile. So if you can picture the, where the Veterans Memorial restroom building is at Riverdale Regional Park, over to the east to the South Flat Trail, that section was a hundred thousand dollars two years ago. And, uh, concrete repair costs more than that now. Most of those repairs are where concrete heaves or the, the concrete has broken up or failed, um, or been damaged, um, flooded. Um, any of those types of things cause us to have to replace sections and pieces. To add new concrete, new trail, that court sort of thing would need to be done with, with this money. Uh, parking lots and repairs to the parking lots, shelters, um, soft surface trail, um, building soft surface trail repairing, replacing, which we constantly have to do as they get eroded. Um, outdoor arenas at Riverdale Regional Park that four H uses, uh, repairs to the barns, which hopefully we won't have to do that for a while, but with, with the new barns, however, there is going to be upkeep that's going to have to be done on a regular basis. And then like at Riverdale Regional Park Campus and even at South Parks, we have buildings and facilities takes care of inside. We take care of the outside of those buildings. So any of the concrete paths or any of the other infrastructure that needs to be taken care of, we do. So that's what those, those two, that's, those are the ongoing costs that would be associated with those two. And on the next slide, in twenty twenty-six, what we wanted to do, because there is such a strong need for inclusive playground at Riverdale Regional Park, as well as, um, adding the third, uh, large shelter to Riverdale Regional Park that was part of the Riverdale Regional Park master plan. Um, we were going to combine those, the, that two hundred and that two hundred and fifty. We did ask for a grant, which is in the current open space grant process that will come to you with the fall grants, to combine those to leverage that money to get one point five million dollars to do the shelter, to do as much of that playground as we can, adding those inclusive elements. And then other, um, minor upgrades or repairs that may be done as part of that project. We've not received the money, so we've not done any of the, the initial planning for it. We know what elements we'd like to include, um, but we also know we'd like to prioritize that and get that done as soon as we can next year.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, where is that third, that large, the sh- the large shelter?
The, the two thousand eighteen Riverdale Regional Park master plan called for that to go by the playground. And so that would be.
And a shelter adjacent. Okay.
And that playground's been there since ninety-nine and lived its life. And it also, we don't have inclusive elements at any of our playgrounds. And the idea would be this is kind of flagship playground. That's where we at least like to start.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
And to begin.
Thanks, Byron.
That would be immediate.
Thank you. So my understanding then is, is that we still need to apply for a grant for the playground. Is that correct?
So we did apply for that grant. Uh, it's part of the, uh, this fall, um, Adams County Open Space Tax Grant Process. So it's been applied for, um, they've done their ranking. It scored well. Um, and then if they approve it and that meeting is next Wednesday and actually tomorrow night, um, then it will be, um, brought to you for, for approval if you want to move forward with it.
Okay.
And the hope would be to get it under construction next year.
All right. So what is, um, and I don't think it's the conversation for today. What is outstanding at the Riverdale Regional Park? Because it feels like it's a new thing. It's a new fence. It's a new playground. The shelters are gone. Now it's a larger shelter. So I'm not getting, and that's the conversation with Alicia and Dion as far as, um, available funding, these one-time business case requests that we're seeing on a budget, um, annually. I know next year is going to be another tough year, so I'll defer to Alicia and Dion to kind of put together, what is the inventory of, um, what is, what is still outstanding at the Riverdale Regional Park? And when, when will that whole thing cross the finish line? Um, you know, what is the replacement timeline for other, you know, whether it's assets or major repairs, um, across the board? I think that I'm looking in this, we're, we're just looking at the, the broad picture of the county. Um, it was said earlier today, you know, we don't, our funding didn't apply here really, but we don't have the funding in abundance like we did in the past. And I think that precision going forward is what's going to save us in the long run of identifying those things that are at critical need, um, of replacement and or repair. So I'm just going to leave my comments there and I'll defer to Alicia and, um, Dion to, to carry it on that conversation.
Yeah, we can, um, we're working on a couple of things. One is the kind of broad overview of priorities and plans for the parks in general. River, Riverdale Park is part of that conversation. Um, I do want to note that ongoing maintenance is considered as part of the, um, CIP planning process and the open space planning process, um, and we can bring that information back to you. I don't, I do want to, uh, you know, set expectations that even with large projects like the Riverdale Regional Park upgrades, there will always be ongoing maintenance that we have to plan for. And so we want to make sure we have that information for you as well because the projects are done. And then there's the next phase of what, what does maintenance look like and at what level? And how is that going to work into our future plans? Um, so, yeah. I, I agree though, precision is going to be really important as we move forward with some of these, some of these projects.
I appreciate that. Thanks, Dion.
Thanks.
Okay. That was our follow-up from last time. Thank you, Mark, for reminding me about those. Um, so jumping into the, the business case requests, um, up on the screen are the, are the recommended one-time. So these are, uh, as we discussed, um, once the money is spent, then the project is over and these don't build the base of the budget. So you can, you'll see a list of, uh, things here that, that show up sometimes recurring because we request them every year. We don't want to build the base with them. Um, for example, the scholarship fund is one that, that kind of changes year over year based on the, the grant programs like you've heard about in prior study sessions. And so that'll always show up here. And then, um, you'll also see some, uh, programs that may have been requested as ongoing, but, um, we're, be, are being recommended to run more like a pilot and sort of go this year with one-time funding. And if successful, come back in a future year for, uh, ongoing request. So I don't know if we want to go down the line and look at each one. There's some large ones on here. Um, you, you know, we've got the, the poverty reduction business cases, uh, down here towards the bottom. They've got the economic incentives, um, a, a note on economic incentives. Those we have actually always had in the budget, but this year we wanted to call them out in this way, rather than just kind of build them into the base. So it was more transparent about the dollar amount for them. Um, and it changes every year, uh, slightly. So it kind of made sense to approach it this way. Um, moving down the line, you can see the, I think the largest of all of these is the twenty twenty-six election, which you heard about from our clerk and recorder. Various, uh, projects and, uh, Various, uh, projects and, uh, one-time software purchases. Things like that. So please stop me if I'm, I'm moving too fast, but, um, the. The last project here, you'll see, um, in the general fund, our, our regional commitments, um. Through Public Works, these are, uh, things like the E four seventy interchange where we agreed to participate. Um, in, in a portion of that, and there are a listing of projects that, um, next year we anticipate, uh, contributing. Uh, to this level for.
And those are all joint profit.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
The I G A's are out and at some point they get ready to do the work and they ask for their payment. Yeah.
Any questions on the general fund?
Thank you very much.
Um, so. Moving down into the capital facilities fund, you see a few here, um, these are all related to the, um. The two percent for the arts program, um, these have. Uh, tha- that program builds up fund balance based on capital projects that have been approved. And so this all fits within. The amount of funds they have set aside, they're just asking for the authority to spend on these projects. Um, related to, to different projects. So you can see, um, some, some work at the Alleser Building. Uh, kind of throughout the county, that they have a little more discretion on where these, um, art installations go. Um, and then in the fleet fund, so there's just some small pieces of equipment, um, for the fleet technicians to use. As part of maintaining our fleet. Kind of a rarity here, you see a negative business case, this, uh, you heard about this, uh, during the human services presentation. Um, they're doing some consolidation and we're actually gonna have some savings here, so we're flagging that. Um, not very often that we get to say, hooray, we're. Minus numbers don't show up here very often, so pretty excited about that, um. In the developmentally disabled fund, this is, um, a one-time project, uh, that they've requested. Well within their fund balance and the allocation that we have from that through the mill levy. Um, and then in the open space project fund, these are again, um, to art. Uh, two percent for the art program related projects. Wrapping everything up, we have, um, the Colorado and Spaceport Fund. And so you'll see, uh, there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars here. Um, to establish a, uh, facilities, operations, maintenance shop. Um, you know, this is to purchase the equipment that they need to, to do some of the, the maintenance out there. Um, and to actually put a shop together like they have at other facilities. Um, the P three and then just some replacement furniture for the pilot lounge.
So, um, at the risk of being controversial, and maybe this isn't the right moment, if we wanna go back to the one before. On the two percent of arts, where was that showing up? The bottom.
Yes.
Thank you. That's what I thought. Oh, there it is. Yes, um. Just cause everything is on the table. I love the arts a lot. We voted several years ago in an abundance of excitement to have one of the higher arts set aside. In the metro area, I think we have the highest by half percent. Is that something that we would be open to having a conversation about, given the times? And moving to something that's similar to our regional peers, such as a one percent or a one and a half percent? And I love art.
I know.
But we have the highest art set aside in the metro area, which probably mean we have the highest art set aside in the state.
And we could bring back those options for you all to consider if you would like to look at the numbers and see.
Yeah, I can't make a decision without looking at the number.
Can you bring back the policy?
I can.
Starting point, um, to get Kathy and Julie and then a refresher for. Steve, Emma and I of the two percent, um. Does the two percent go back to? Where the capital investment was at? Does it, is it flexed to go other places? I think that there's. Some question on the board of the use of that funding.
And we have a new board. And so, and, and I'm being very dusty in my recollection as well. Like, I think this is what I recall. And so having that conversation and interesting on your board members, um, could be helpful.
Yeah, we can bring that back. And I recently sent around a memo a few weeks ago, um, just a refresher on the current status of the. Two percent for the arts program. We have several project base, um, set asides for the arts. I think the most recent update was two years ago in twenty twenty-three, um, and we can share that background. And I do wanna just clarify. Um, Emma, your, your question is related to reducing the percentage set aside for the arts and. Potentially recapturing or using those funds or just returning back to fund balance. I think that's probably part of the conversation.
And these come out of our capital funds, so that's why they are noted in. For instance, Open Space Projects Fund and then our Capital Facilities Fund, Road and Bridge Fund, um. So those are capital expenditures, so they would go back to other capital expenses.
And, and that makes sense, but all of that takes pressure off the budget.
True.
And with cost overruns and tariff increases and a partridge in a pear tree. Having more flexibility could be helpful. I am not made up my mind. I just want us to have the conversation. And I only bring it up because I remember feeling very bold at the time that we would have the highest art set aside in the metro region. I now feel a little differently about that, given all the other challenges that we are facing. And it's hard to have these conversations about things that we love.
I'll, I'll have a conversation about it. I mean, I have a lot of confidence in where, in where we are in terms of stability. Again, as I said this morning, and I'll re-say it again here, you know, that we, I think our budget finances and county manager's team has. Great job of, uh, setting for, putting us on a stable course. And so. I would be curious about the numbers and the policy to Lynn's point, because I have not actually, we haven't had a big conversation about it since I've joined the board.
Yeah, I, you know, I think. I'll have to look at the numbers as well. I see this as an investment and, you know, what will save on a front end of a project is. It's kind of like when you buy your house. Are you ever gonna go back and do that thing?
You're never gonna go back and add the patio.
You're never gonna go back and like change the tile. You're just like, the tile's fine. We're just gonna live with the tile. It's fine. Um, and I kind of feel the same way about the arts. And the other thing that I like about our, our program. Is yes, some of it does take place interior, in the interior of our buildings. Um, but it's really that added component on the exterior, like the mural. At fifty-eighth Avenue, um, like the Lotus, the Lotus, you know, at Bell Parks that. That then becomes a neighborhood amenity and adding to a neighborhood that. Could have gone neglected for some time. And it's just, I think it's bringing that pride back into community. So. Um, interested in the conversation.
Thanks.
Alright, so now we're into the not recommended, um, and, you know, same. Uh, same message as last time, there was, uh. Nothing that is on the not recommended list was, you know, seen as, uh, you know, a bad project or request. Oftentimes there were. Um. You know, we thought there might be flexibility to either absorb or pursue this project with budget savings in the current year. Um, or, uh, you know, we're dealing with the fiscal constraints. And so this may not just. May not be the year for a project to move forward, um, and so here we have the list of not recommended. I can see. The general fund, um. A- and so any questions on, on these projects here, why they weren't recommended or what the. Or if they should be recommended, uh, based on your feedback.
And Mark, can you go back on this slide? Um, I do wanna point out for the social services fund, we are funding the employee investments. This is really not recommending that transfer. Um, so to be clear, we are funding the annual employee investments and, um, adult services contracts, but. It's really the transfer that was requested that we are not recommending at this time. And when anyone gets the idea that we're not funding those.
General fund. So, um, Katie is here too, and, um, if we need to call her, and we can, but we've been working really closely with Katie to determine. How much Fund fifteen can sustain versus how much general fund support they need. And we may need to discuss a general fund transfer at some point next year, as we talked about last week, um. Monitoring fund balance in both the general fund and Fund fifteen, the social services fund will be something we're all doing. You know, on a very regular basis as the shutdown impacts continue to. Effect us in any other decreases to allocations that we are monitoring, but, uh, we didn't recommend doing it proactively. I'll just say that we will draw down on Fund fifteen and then bring back additional updates to you on fund balance. Um, analysis.
New pressures to the general fund, but I didn't want anyone to misunderstand that we are funding these, um, supports, but it's the transfer that we actually. Not recommending, uh, from general fund at this time, but to Chris's point, something's gonna probably be in ongoing conversation or analysis as we proceed.
And we have that five million dollar, when we hit the five million dollar mark, obviously we have a conversation with the board, um, which. We've begun to have that conversation.
Um, so moving on from the general fund, you'll see the, uh. The request for claims and the insurance fund. The county attorney's office, we discussed, I, I think we discussed when this business case was actually. Brought up during, uh, Heidi's presentation that we may not actually need this fund because the fund balance is enough to support it. But if that, you know, if a bunch of claims hit at once, it would have to be handled through probably a budget amendment or something along that.
Wouldn't be cool, and we won't need the four million dollars.
Exactly. And then the final on here, um, for the security camera upgrades, uh, the, the not recommenda-. The non-recommendation is more based on, uh, the transition from cast maintaining facilities to, uh, FFM doing that. And kind of trying to wrap that security camera system in with a more. Uh, standard approach across the county and giving facilities time to establish out there and do that project. Any questions on any of those not recommended one-time business cases?
Add it this. Yeah, let me look at this one. Oh, no, no way. Sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, so moving from that, um. You'll notice, uh, for major maintenance and replacement plan, the capital projects.
Actually, if I could have one.
Yes.
Back a couple of slides to the, uh, wait, the. Was there another one? It was about. There another slide this, above this one? Yeah, the, um. Land and water portfolio. On the not recommended under, so are we? Where are we on our portfolio? Uh, what are we gonna do with that discussion about?
Do some internal work across departments first before we recommend purchasing any particular software product. And so. We may bring a request back in the future, but, um, we wanted to have additional time to coordinate and collaborate. This came up. In multiple department budget presentations, sort of the asset inventory, and then there was discussion about. Streamlining and centralizing some of that, um, asset management oversight. And so we just discussed at the E L T about. Let's just take a little bit more time before we determine what the solution is, um, to create some of those internal efficiencies. The work's continuing on that. I guess that was my main, that's my, was my main question was, what it meant that it was not recommended.
Yeah, the work is continuing and I do want to highlight what Kristen just mentioned. You know, we've had conversations over the last few weeks about. Where we might have redundant services or might be duplicating, uh, working a- across different departments. And so there's a couple of. Um, proposals that we are kind of taking a second look at, um, making sure that if we have. You know, like this one, multiple efforts going on that, uh, we're more, um, strategic and taking a little more time to make sure we. Don't purchase the same software in different iterations multiple times and things like that. So that's part of that as well. Wonderful. Thank you.
I think my only question on this slide is. I can't remember which business case it was, which department, um, the investment in training. So looking at the sheriff's office, the detective division. Um, there, uh, there's an ask for increased training for the detective division. Is there a chance to bring that back? Do we need more information from the sheriff's office? Since we're not adding. Correct me if I'm wrong, we're not adding more detectives. And I don't know what certifications are needed in different positions in the county. So I think that would be my only flag for this slide. Is what is, uh, increased training or just training, maybe not an increase, um. I don't know about the wording, but if we can just look at that one.
We can, uh, we'll bring that back on a follow-up with a little bit more information in our.
Thank you.
Our session next week.
I really like, can we go back just a second? Is this Samir's? To do the county land and water portfolio. I love that project. Is that?
That's what we.
Or was it asset?
That was what we just talked.
We just talked about that one. Okay.
She wanted to be more strategic, cause there were kind of various departments that had similar.
Okay, I'm good.
So the major maintenance and replacement plan, um. As we alluded to earlier, thi- this goes through, uh, it's actually the first step in the capital improvement plan development process. I personally work with, uh, most of the departments to kind of go through their list of replacement items, uh, we, we. Usually will have a couple of workshops and kind of just try and figure out what is out there that we're looking at that we currently have that needs to be replaced. Um, and then we bring that list to the capital projects committee. And if the committee feels like there's. Something, uh, that's been identified as maintenance, that's maybe more of a nice to have than a need to have. They'll actually remove it from the major maintenance and put it through the regular C I, the, the other C I P process where it's scored by, um. Project. So you won't actually see, uh, a recommended and not recommended. By the time that process goes through. The committee is usually prepared to recommend the major maintenance and replacement plan in its entirety. Um, ahead of the C I P requests. Um, one thing I'll note is. As we went through this process, um, the budget team, E L T and facilities in particular. We kind of did a second pass at the list just to make sure that there was capacity to address the volume of projects. Um, and working with facilities, there were a couple of projects that we kind of phased a little later than the numbers you would have seen a couple of weeks ago. Um, when we presented on this. So if, if you're comparing the bottom line, uh, M M R P from. Couple of weeks ago to here, there is gonna be a little bit of a change, um, those, in particular, those two projects were. Uh, to read them to remember, there were some windows at the Western Services Center. Um, and some siding at the D A. Not that work is not continuing on those projects, but we actually think that the true spend will probably hit more in twenty twenty-seven than twenty twenty-six, so.
Okay.
Pushing things out in that way.
To help us hone in on having pure carry forwards, we're trying to budget more accurately on when the spend will occur, so.
One of our ongoing efforts, again, y'all may recall, carrying forward conversation is looking at capacity. And, um, really, um, drilling down to what our actual capacity is, so we're not carrying forward so many projects. Year over year, um, that were not intended to be multi-year projects. We do have some multi-year projects, but, um, trying to right-size that. Get projects done and also have a better sense of what our actual fund balance is without such a large carry forward unfinished projects. So. It's the ongoing effort. Makes it a little cleaner, I. Yes. It's helpful.
Any questions on the? Major maintenance and replacement plan? So you'll see.
No, I, I, yeah. These are very specific and I'm sure, you know, you said you've been through every department with the staff. And so I'm. I'm sure you highlighted what was most important for health and safety.
That would be my comment as well. Like, these are all really technical and.
Yes.
On their own seem very important. And I think this is where you have me bringing up projects that are also near and dear to my heart and like trying to figure out. Where can we make space so that we are prioritizing critical for infrastructure, critical for safety, critical for community response? While still trimming. And I see a lot on the cutting floor here, which we have asked for in years past to see what was left behind. Um, it's humbling and I really trust Dion, I trust you and the team and um and Mark's that we have done our best um to prioritize those things that are critical for continued operations and critical for community safety. And that's all we can do in this really difficult budget year. And for twenty seven, which is going to be just as bad if not worse.
I agree. I just have, um, I don't think we still have some slides to go. Um, and there's like me not I don't think it's been presented yet. We did take a tour of the sheriff's office. Some of um a couple of things that stood out to me on that tour is
The substation.
The substation. Um, really the necessity to bring the weight room down to the main level and not keep it on the second floor. That seemed really critical. If there's an alternative, um I don't know if there's synergy with it sounds like they inherited the space, took over the space of probation being in the substation. Um without a major anything in the near future of expanding the sheriff's office, I think keeping their operation together and maybe um I need a new place for probation to live for a while unless there's synergy there, and I don't know if there is or not. Um, it seemed like a substantial amount of square footage. Hopefully that would relieve some of the pressure valves of um the different phasing, the sheriff was very into the different phasing, phase two and phase three. If we can um look at some fixes with probation potentially moving, bringing that weight room down to this main level, that'd be great as well. Um, and then some of their furniture, I, they are really looking at, I see an FFNE request on art on this particular screen. Um they are really holding it together. They're using hand-me-downs, they're they're in cubicle um space, the cubicle furniture and panels are old, twenty, thirty years old. There's a warped, you know, six-foot table just on the other side of the public viewing area on I don't know what's on that side, the left-hand side, which I think used to be motor vehicles. Is it ticket, traffic tickets? It is because on the other side it was records. Um they're just in need of, I don't know if that office is our best foot forward when it comes to furnishings and functionality and um really trying to create that you know, pride that we want our employees to have when they go out and serve the public. So those were a couple of things that the sheriff had mentioned that I picked up during the tour.
Do you have anything?
No, no, I, other than, I mean, the, the talking about the space, I don't know if that's it could have a legit impact, but it's just a conversation that we probably should have at some point, but that's, but I don't want to get off topic today. Yeah.
So, yeah, there yeah, there was, there was a request that went through the CIP committee for the traffic area uh remodel. It actually, you'll see it on here, uh is not part of the recommendation based on the way that it scored. I think that uh Amir and his team has identified uh that as a component of the overall substation project, um and so they may be able to address that um without having to fund it through the, the CIP. Um, I, I think, uh not to steal all the thunder from Amir, but I, he's gracious enough to let me uh take part in a lot of these projects. There's also a larger uh plan for that facility through the FMP. Um, and I, I think we can anticipate on seeing requests around that in the coming years for the CIP. Uh, especially now that we've kind of picked a path for the jail.
That's correct.
Uh, the, the current path we're on allows for
It is but the, so these master plan does contemplate, will we be from the sheriff's substation?
Okay.
And we'll be bringing that at some point in the future when the priority shows that it will be. We're addressing the furniture through phase one of the remodel. Um, we've worked something out with the sheriff and his team and my, my team in terms of finding savings for the existing phase one CIP project. So we should be, should be good there. I, I left a nice message.
Okay. Well, thank you. And we, when they presented that project to the CIP committee, we did talk about trying to find some existing operating budget to fund the replacement of furniture. And so that, I think that's been an ongoing discussion, I think. But now that we have a proposed budget, it's heightened the discussions of figuring out how to get that furniture replaced, but we agree that we can find a solution there.
Including the showers and we'll be looking, wait, obviously, because it does create an impact below. So we're looking at a few things, but this week, figuring what happened base.
Thank you.
Right. So, moving on from the general fund, um in the golf course fund, you know, the just regular maintenance out there, they have uh replacement golf carts, bunkers, all the stuff that golf courses do, uh that all fits within the, the golf course fund balance. Um, so it's not impacting, you know, it's not requiring general fund support or anything like that. Um in the fleet fund, these are uh uh you'll notice a couple of items here that even though it says replacement, uh you'll see a big all caps new. That is just identifying, these are new to the fleet fund. This is as uh fleet continues to take over the operations of the CASP fleet, where prior the CASP fund would have owned those vehicles and held on to them for a really long time and sort of patched them up as much as they could until they're showing us thirty-five-year-old de-icing trucks um through the CIP process. This formalizes that process and brings these vehicles under the purview of our fleet uh division, which is much more suited to handle that. Um
Sounds good.
And then uh in terms of the, the rest of the replacements, these are all um replacements that have identified by our fleet department, and these are vehicles that we are purchasing, vehicles and equipment that are being purchased, not leased. That's why they show up here.
I have a question about uh the vehicle replacement rotation. Um, I was cha- chatting with um Shannon Hancock over at Adams Twelve and one of their CTE teachers about law enforcement vehicles. What do we do with our law enforcement vehicles that are beyond their useful life? Is that a mere question? And do we ever talk to our various school districts about use for their CTE programs for their law enforcement students?
Typically, the process that we do sell them, come down and strip the uh technical equipment off and put them to auction. Some will use a flat rock or training purposes, sure. But we typically don't do it that often, but when we do, we try to get the best bang for the dollars for the sheriff's office in terms of the funds coming back. As an auction sale or if it's used for uh high-speed training.
Okay, that makes sense. How much do those cars get at auction?
It's if they crash or not.
They, they leave rough lines.
They're, they're used heavily.
There aren't a lot that make it to that point. Yeah, that was sort of my question.
There's my part. You drive into a fleet and love all that role, each idea. Auctions were very hard. It's very difficult, it's a high-speed situation. So we can salvage them to use a flat rock. That's the first preference. Because that's a probably better use than the actual auction. By the time we get there, they're surprised sometimes. They're not an optimal shape.
Amir, what do you think is the most you would get for, because they, we depreciate them over how many years, seven years if they can make it? And then, you know, you're probably getting less than, I would guess, less than ten thousand or something.
Every month, it's
Does replenish the fleet fund, so it is one source of um of revenue for the fleet fund, but it's a small source.
Two to ten thousand dollars, a very accurate number. And if it gets less than that, then we say, okay.
That's also without all the equipment, so they're, they wouldn't be useful for training.
Yes.
Educational setting. Okay. All right. Thank you.
So last on the list is uh for the Colorado Spaceport Fund and the, the one project for twenty twenty six is um just doing some work on the roof.
Okay.
I'm sorry, there's one more for the Flat Rock Fund, and this is just the zebra mats are the mats that they do their arrest control training on. It's just kind of the padding so that when they're throwing each other around, they're not landing on the walls or cement or
We support that.
Yes, we want to have good mats.
Um, so now we're into the, the capital improvement plan. So these would be the uh that were scored and we reviewed that scoring process earlier. Um, and so in the general fund, we have the, the pieces of equipment. Um, as a reminder, these are um the top twenty-five percent of projects. Um, I want to note this very last one, the Riverdale Bluffs general fund portion. That was left out of the proposed budget but was a recommendation of the capital projects committee. Um, I can, that was a mistake on my part as I was translating from the CIP portal to the actual uh enterprise. There's two components to this project. There's one part that's in the open space projects fund, and then one part that's in the general fund, which is funded up to two-point-six million dollars by uh public land dedication fees. I loaded it in the open space projects fund and uh forgot to load it in the general fund. So I'm showing it to you here as a recommendation, but it was not included in the numbers for the proposed budget. Um, so if you're in support of that still going forward, it would be a change from proposed to adopted. Otherwise, we would back it out against what the capital projects committee recommended. Uh, so just full transparency there, why that's showing up.
And we do have a study session coming up on this project specifically to talk about the direction uh that we want to go on and I say it's a couple of weeks.
We put it in the we'll get that information to y'all on when to expect it with the exercise that
We bumped it last week here. It's hard to keep it all, okay, but that, yes, please do.
Yeah, and if it's not uh before the budget is adopted, it may be something that we address through an amendment um once we've had that big picture conversation.
Oh, yeah, I like that. Yeah, I mean, I like that. Thank you for reminding, saying that, cleaning that out because I appreciate it.
Uh, so moving to the capital facilities fund, um you'll see the, the jail is now presented on the current path um that the prior, the most recent study session has uh set us upon. So the original request was for forty-two million and then I don't remember what twenty-seven through twenty-nine were, but it was, you know, more than forty-two million but less than a hundred. Um, where we're contemplating it here as doing, uh continuing to do ten million um for the most urgent needs and explore um financing in twenty twenty-seven um for the larger project. Um, and with that, we were able to move the Flat Rock Range enclosure into the capital facilities fund rather than the general fund.
Okay.
And then the Head Start uh facilities, so uh we've kind of come full circle back to Head Start. This is a capital improvement for, at one of the facilities um that we're funding with the sales taxes.
Okay, it's two actually, but yeah, it'll be the Commerce City and then
Because that sounded like a lot for just one.
Yeah, it's two different. The um one location is at High Greyhound in Commerce City and that All Day Family Affordable Project. And then another one is Westminster, I think, um and Uplands. Affordable mixed income community.
Okay.
Uh, so then in the golf course fund, there's the, the continuation of the golf course clubhouse renovation. And then in the uh fleet fund, there's the purchase of a couple of spare vehicles for the sheriff's office. Mike kind of came and presented to you about those earlier this year. Um, how keeping spares on hand as frequently as they are wrecked and put out of service helps keep our sheriff uh deputies on the road with functioning vehicles. Um, in the Roden Bridge Fund, you'll see we have uh some two percent for the art programs. Those are the first two on the top. Um, we are contemplating the, the Fuel Enterprise, uh Fuel Impact Enterprise, that is offset by revenues. Um, and then the five-year CIP, um all of these are still sort of under discussion. There is a later uh study session, I think in a week or two. Um, where you'll be discussing that in more detail. Um, but these are the numbers that were uh are currently in the proposed budget, so. For the Open Space Projects Fund, uh we discussed the ongoing requests. This would be the uh the capital component, so we do have some funds in there um available for acquisitions. Um, that's what you'll see on the top there. There's some irrigation infrastructure repairs that they're doing. And then you see the, the portion of the Riverdale Bluffs that I did remember to put in, um shows up here in Open Space Projects.
Can you go back one slide, please? Open Space Projects acquisition. Allocation for next year. I'm, I'm, my question is about the acquisition, the top line of our Open Space Projects Fund, so open, open space acquisition. So this is from this particular fund, but obviously we, can we use general, if, if we had an, if there was an acquisition, we wanted to make in excess of three hundred thousand dollars next year? How do we, where does that money come from?
Yeah, so typically, we would probably try for a grant first from the Open Space Projects or the Open Space Sales Tax.
Okay.
And this would leverage and be an offset or a, a match to that grant, or we, yeah, we can also do general fund, uh and we have in the past.
Okay, I just want, yeah, I just want to make sure that, I just have wanted you to have you talk me through that. Thank you.
Any other questions on the Open Space Project? Uh, so moving into the Colorado Spaceport Fund, um you'll see a couple here that are noted as county portion. Um, we've budgeted only what uh we're hoping that, or the, we're anticipating the county to put towards these projects. So for instance, the Fuel Farm, um that, that's being budgeted as a ninety-ten split, so ten percent from the county, ninety percent either from FAA or CDOT. Um, and as those grants are actually finalized and signed, we would be bringing back a budget amendment for the full expenditure authority. Um, but to show our, our partners that we have the funding available for our percentage, we're putting it here in the budget. Uh, you'll see that again for the Runway Seventeen Three Five Rehab and Taxi Lane. Uh, let's see if I can do this. Alpha Seven Bravo and Alpha Eight Bravo. I think I got those uh phonetic numbers right. Um, so that, that's the full recommendation from the CIP Committee. Uh, if you'll remember, that would be the top twenty-five percent of scoring projects and any project that had a dedicated funding source that may not have fallen in that top twenty-five percent, but is not competing for other dollars.
Okay.
Um, so moving on from that, we, we sort of uh named the middle of the pack for the CIP scores, the parking lot. These are projects that um did not meet the, the top twenty-five percent threshold. Um, but the capital projects committee recommends them to be sort of next in line for consideration if funding becomes available throughout the year. So uh our thought process there was uh it happens a lot that throughout the middle of the year, a new project might come up. Um, is that when that new project comes up, it would be weighed against these to see where it falls in priority. So these were identified and scored. Obviously, new priorities happen all the time, um and we would like to make sure these are considered in addition to the new priority um as it comes forward. So that's sort of where the parking lot lands.
Can you please explain the roof hoists under the second line of the coroner's office?
I think Amir can probably talk to that better than I can. I think Amir can probably talk to that better than I can.
This is a critical safety item that allow you to let we're we're in lifting like rooftop units, uh any heavy. There's some special hoist that we could actually use versus actually doing the existing. Uh, we call what existing cables that we use now. These are automated and they're new and need to replace them. We don't need them at the moment. We definitely know it's a priority, but we just replaced some rooftop units with the existing voice equipment that we have. So we want to fix what's there and or replace.
So it's not a critical safety issue for
Not immediate.
But it's in, but that's why it's in the queue.
That's why it's in the queue.
Thank you. And then I just want to make sure I understand when you refer to the Baumgartner Nature Center for Parks and Open Space, that is at the Ailer Open Space Park. Is that the one that's in? With in Thornton there or where is that? Where is that Baumgartner?
Just East of Thornton on one hundred and thirty-six.
Where's the Baumgartner Nature Center? I don't understand. I guess I'm not clear on this.
So it's the, it's a property that we purchased on the southwest corner of one hundred and thirty-sixth and Riverdale. There's an existing house up on the hill. This was to explore really what the programming should be for that house. And in addition, there are currently, we're looking at some uh structural improvements that need to be done to the building.
So this is located, it's again the southwest corner?
Yes, so Riverdale one hundred and thirty-six. So it's essentially across the street from the Dunes Golf Course.
All right, nevermind. I don't, I I don't, I some point got my lines crossed there.
It's not an existing nature center now.
Okay, so it's not the part of that other project. Okay. Thank you.
Any questions on the the parking lot? Uh, just to be clear, parking lot is probably a nicer way of saying not recommended. Uh, so these are not included in the proposed budget. And that has been communicated to to any of the requesting departments with these projects that to them, these are not recommended, but the committee wanted to identify those sort of next up type projects. Uh, and finally, there's the um, these projects were not recommended by the Capital Projects Committee. They they fell in the bottom twenty-five percent. And the sort of the action item from Capital Projects Committee is to um go back to the requesting departments and uh review how they scored and further develop the prog, the project to be resubmitted in a future year. So if there's any questions on these, um, I believe that'll be, this is the last of our review for today.
I don't have any other questions, just to be clear. I'm able to ask mine along the way. This is a lot of work.
Yeah.
To get to this moment, like we go through this presentation, takes ninety minutes. This has been months of work with dozens of people, so thank you.
Appreciate that. It is a lot of work. I think we've been working all year on.
Right.
Just shifting our lens. Um, not that we didn't have it before, but I think it's it's been really um great to see everybody uh really looking at more strategically what we are taking on, what our capacity is and putting that um, you know, focus on where are those safety improvements, community supportive improvements, that kind of thing. I think everybody has really leaned into that. Um, and it's reflected in the plan. So I appreciate that feedback because it's been a constant conversation as we've been going through this process. Um, I did want to tee up, um, you know, if there's no other questions about the specifics here, next week we have a presentation on um memberships and then we have a few outstanding items that we are going to read back to you. But I also wanted to just sort of open up or can or talk about. I know there's some other um priorities or other needs that the board has raised over the last couple of months, and we want to be able to bring back to you information if there are um you know, one-time support and I'm talking specifically about some of the conversations we've had around things like um rental assistance, for example. What that actually would look like. I know Heidi's doing some research into what is our capacity um and our authority within our general fund for some of these. Um, but in order to have that conversation, I think our team definitely would appreciate if there are specific um priorities or ideas that you have that we can uh pull together some information ahead of the next conversations that would be helpful um for us. Um, and of course, you know, this, but we haven't really had a chance to incorporate that into the conversations thus far and definitely just have a space to do that.
Yeah, that would, and you're talking about at the next, either next week or presentation. Great. Now, this was a ton of work. Thank you for distilling all of this down and really hitting the highlights and uh and sharing the process that the Capital Improvements Committee goes through and and the hard work needed to make these recommendations. And and your and your work, of course, not to, I mean, a lot of decis, so a million decision points along the way. It's it's it takes a lot of energy and stamina to to really deliver this, so thank you.
I think you know, in our five-on-one we had yesterday with Heidi, it's going to be really informative of what the ask, if there is one, can be, I think that the SNAP information that we received last week plays a different lens of I'm not in a position to say housing is greater than food or food is greater than housing for our constituents. Um, and what that looks like and a lot of this we can't control because it's just finding that we can't um infuse into our systems. I think my only ask is, is it used to be called the Adams County Foundation. Is that now the community grants programming?
Yeah, the enrichment grant.
The enrichment grant. Thank you. Um, can you do some research if that was at one point a hundred million or not a hundred? I wish.
One million.
And what time frame? I think now it's at eight hundred thousand. Um, and maybe you know, in the short term, two years, a year that we um you know, look at increasing that back to its original. I don't know why it was reduced, but if that's just a discussion point we can have to um, look at that. The board also had a discussion on with Heidi and Heidi will bring all of this back is, you know, maybe we look at that community enrichment grant focus areas and maybe we suspend the current programming we like um you know, the innovation and finding different solutions for different portions of the population, but I think it's just critical mass of where we're at now, especially as the federal government um shutdown looms over us of maybe we redirect the priorities of that program to something that needs an immediate need in the community.
Um, completely agree, and that's just another thing on the table for these conversations and um I I I think we've got some options and I want us to have conversations. Um, and I really appreciate a D N you working with Heidi. Heidi got a lot of feedback from the the board. And so I think that um you you feel pretty clear in direction. And I just think that like in the next couple of weeks, having these conversations, I think the overarching concern that we all shared is like, yes, we're facing these shortfalls right now. And we're in for another three long, hard years. And so what strategic choices are we making that will will serve us well moving forward? That's for me, one of the overarching things.
Yeah, I think they encapsulated it.
And to to Lynn's point, maybe it's just belaboring it, but like we, it is awful to be in this position where people don't have food that they need, not just enough food, but people don't have food. And then we're also looking at eliminating funding that was considered funding of last resort, safety net funding for emergency transitional housing. And so to sit here and be like, well, in a scenario where you don't have any food, is that what we're funding? Or in a situation where you don't have any housing, is that what we're funding? And um, we're just in for some really tough conversations, just like um, the ninety-two thousand people who are staring at losing their SNAP benefits in November are looking at really tough you know, kitchen table conversations in their own homes. I think we're feeling that same stress here. And I I wish I could tell us what to do, but I appreciate the team and appreciate the conversation. Yeah.
So are we good? Oh, we're recording.
Excellent. So, good afternoon. I'm Brian Staley, Public Works Director.
Okay.
And we wanted to have a quick session.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, very fancy.
This is, this is a lightning round.
So you don't get struck by lightning.
Don't stand.
It's the new lightning round.
Energy hot. So today's lightning round session is to follow up on a request that came about in our regional transportation meeting last month, which is an advocacy plan for the C dot ten year plan projects. Really making sure that the projects that we advanced in the four P process, it stay on the list. They are listed, they're in the plan. Things should be full steam ahead. And thank you Commissioner Henson for representing us in the in the four P process earlier this year.
Thank you for all the support. Yeah.
But the attendees of that meeting asked for us to dig a little deeper. And Kristin has some experience in engaging with the Transportation Commission. So I'll hand the mic over here in a moment after I go over materials if you'd like to chime in. But communications put together a couple of things to help support this effort. The cover sheet on the right-hand side of your folders is a lead behind. I thought they did an excellent job. It's got your faces on the back. Sections.
Does that make it better?
There you go. That's all solved. Also.
Yeah, it's, it's right there. Contact details for Dionne and Gillian. And, and some great talking points for I twenty-five segment two and I two seventy. In the very back, I'll start from the back forward apparently, of the left-hand side of your folders is an op-ed that communications also produced for us that we might, with your approval, float out there to continue elevating the conversation around what these quarters mean for our community. I also threw in here a, a quick page turn on Transporte- Transportation Commission writ large, what's on their website. And then a bio on their website for our new Transportation Commissioner Alicia Jones. Just for future reference, quick reference in your folders. And then the final two pieces are the July tenth talking points for the I two seventy corridor. And then there was a request that came through last week for more in-depth talking points after a meeting with, between Commissioners and Green Latinos on air quality, specific talking points. So I put together a second list with participation from the Health Department and CED to really do a deep dive on the air quality benefits of improvements to the I two seventy corridor. So I'll take a breath there. Anything else you'd like to add, Kristin, on proper engagement or thoughtful engagement with Transportation Commission?
Yesterday's regional transportation meeting, we just discussed strategy a little bit. So a lot of you were present for that, but I would just say that the most effective strategy that I found is partnering really closely with your Transportation Commissioner. And so that's part of our strategy. And we've had discussions in the last twenty-four hours about getting together with Commissioner Jones and orienting her to our projects and encouraging her to lean into the new parts of her commission boundary that she's less familiar with, since we know she knows the Boulder County and the Boulder Region projects very well. And just trying to align with her experience in advocating for a community that also has concerns about equity when it comes to distribution of any kind of federal transportation funds. And I think it's still kind of that protect and defend of the existing list and acknowledging and thanking those at C dot for the inclusion of our priorities on the list and advocating for the continued inclusion and then the continued funding for projects that don't have full funding yet. But I just have, I just wanted to offer my perspective, having advocated to the Transportation Commission in both private and public sector roles, that working one-on-one with your Transportation Commissioner is usually the best way to start. And then you can often gain insight into anything that may be happening. You know, any rumblings sometimes we can learn of in those conversations. So even if we don't have that tour scheduled in the immediate future, I think having coffee with pressure Jones before the, any upcoming Transportation Commission meetings would be smart. And so we'll work on aligning schedules to see how we can support those recommendations coming up here soon.
Okay, so you, so staff is working on?
Yeah, Gillian is working on that today.
Having us schedule a coffee.
She, as I had mentioned yesterday, she had, you know, tried to follow the proper channels to work with the Secretary to the Transportation Commission and had been passed to a scheduler and it was just taking a little bit too long. So we are going to work on some direct connections today. We'll update you as soon as we are successful in that. And I think when we identify the date for the tour, if that's too far out, we'll look at some more informal one-on-one opportunities too.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, sounds great.
So next steps on, on our advocacy process. We can work with Gillian to put together a peer-to-peer call list. If that was an idea that Commissioner Aricio floated. I feel like following Kristin's advice on let's, let's not alienate the commission by, by making a lot of ruckus in the space. Might be wise. But the lead behinds are hopefully a nice way to support conversations. And just generally make everyone aware that not only are we paying attention, but we're actively engaging with our neighbors on the importance of these corridors. So I'll leave it there. Dionne, Alicia, do you have anything to add or questions from the board?
No, I appreciate your strategy at pulling together some of that collateral, which I think will be really helpful in the setting. But is there anything else that you all?
No, this is perfect. No, I think this is great. Thank you.
This is really great. And I think the, the call list is probably a good idea. And I think I put that in an email reply to one of, I've been trying to catch up on what I was out on last week when I was out for the Adams twelve fall break. Let us know when those invitations go out so that we can nudge. But I hear you on the balance of the ruckus. But I think I had committed to the group as the one closest to Commissioner Jones to reach out to her and say, hello neighbor. So I'm happy to do that.
We'll take you up on that. I'll talk to Gillian at the end of the day and see if she had any success. And then we may take you. I mean, personal relationships are key here too. So we appreciate anybody who is willing to help with the elevating the timeliness of having a conversation with her. Great. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Brian.
And for Commissioners, I've sent all leads and folders on your desk for the materials today.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Jenny?
I, I also said I would, I would take point on this one. But Jenny and Sally are here if I need support. I sent an email about this, maybe just last week. It's all over now, but the, there's a statute that required us to take some form of action on electric vehicle charging stations.
I saw that email.
And it gave us a few options. For now, we are recommending that we just kind of stick with the, the easy option, which is passing a resolution that says we're going to stick with our current regulations. But we are looking at modifications to regulations as part of the DSO overhaul and our building and safety codes. So if that's okay with you guys, Sally has a resolution for you to go and we'll put it on the agenda.
I think that sounds good.
That's great. Fastest path through.
All right. Thank you.